Spanish translation?
Yes, we have Esperanza Villegas.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Esperanza Villegas y esta noche estoy aquí para traducir. Si alguno de ustedes tiene algunas... necesita ayuda puede encontrarme en la parte trasera de esta sala. Gracias.
Gracias. I want to note that there are hearing assistants for the hearing impaired. Note on the board. We have no announcements from closed session. Do we need to report out item B three?
Yeah, we should do that.
Oh, right. Is it? No, I don't think it is. Thank you. Thank you for your help. Yes, so we voted, let's see, the... The... Motion was made by Ms. Harder, seconded by Ms. Parker, and it was five zero that we passed the Casey waiver for graduation for students with disabilities. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Well, we do have one presentation tonight. We're proud of our partnership with Santa Barbara City College. The dual enrollment program, our career technical pathways, middle college, and the transition program are all examples that are programs that provide excellent opportunities for our students. We especially want to recognize the dual enrollment program, and with us tonight we have Marilyn Spaventa. Marilyn, would you like to introduce Carol and Jesus then?
Yes, yes.
They are from, as you can imagine, Santa Barbara City College to share an information about the dual enrollment program.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm Marilyn Spaventa, Dean of Educational Programs, and one of my responsibilities is leadership and oversight of the dual enrollment programs. And here tonight is Carol Flores, who is our coordinator of dual enrollment and director of our tech prep, and Jesus Vega, who is our special program advisor and is our great link to all of the high schools.
Tonight, there's two aspects to dual enrollment. There's the aspect where students traditionally come and take our college classes, and they come to the high... city college campus. But there's also a large program, a part of dual enrollment, where, as you know, classes are offered at the high school campuses, and we call that the off-site program, off-site for us, and that's what we're going to be talking about today. And so, why is this program... why does it do so well? Planning: in 1998 Pablo Bacaloo, who is now our execu... our Vice President of Continuing Education, met extensively with high school administrators, faculty, to build relationships and create a plan that would be a win-win for everyone, but in particular, a win-win for students and, of course, their parents.
The dual enrollment program is built on a philosophy that we're going to take SBCC and bring it out to the high school campuses themselves, at the request of the principals and the teachers in the high school. But this is an opportunity to offer access to college courses to everyone, whether they can get to the campus or not.
And as you can see, we're very much about collaboration with a small information on slides. We decided we're going to split our presentation. But in the area of collaboration, we have worked very closely with so many constituents, the superintendents of both Santa Barbara, Brian, Paul, as well as the Carpinteria Unified School District. We've worked very closely with all of our de... area deans, the high school principals, the counselors at both Santa Barbara City College and the high school, with faculty at the high school campus and faculty at the college with our ROP program. We work very closely on career technical education classes with each high school academy as well, and also with Partners in Education and our tech prep consortium, et cetera. So we are really a part of a lot of different areas, and without that collaboration, our program wouldn't be where it is today.
So what are the benefits? Well, it saves money. Our dual enrollment students don't have to pay any tuition or fees for their college courses, and they really get an early exposure and a chance to explore different careers, get that explosion... exposure to college and that sense of how they are going to be successful as a college student. We know from research, the Community College Research Center at Teachers College in Columbia University has done a study, and students who enroll in college classes when they're in high school, all across the board, particularly in career technical areas, are much more likely to go to college, much more likely to succeed in college, and persist. And of course, if they have some college courses while they're in high school, they're also going to save, on the other end, that they're going to get through those two years or four years, or longer, that they're destined in a much shorter time. And it's really efficient, and we all know how difficult it is nowadays in terms of the cost of a college education. It's becoming a great consideration, and this really, again, opens the door and provides access to a lot of students who might not be going on that path otherwise.
And so, Santa Barbara City College classes are offered at Dos Pueblos High Schools, Santa Barbara, San Marcos, so all of the Santa Barbara High School District, main high schools, also at Bishop Diego High School and at Carpinteria High School. This fall alone, that we're completing now, we have a total of 106 dual enrollment classes that were offered. So you can see, this is a large program. Of those, classes are offered in a total of 31 city college disciplines. The breakdown is basically 16 in career technical, automotive, we have in computer engineering, just a variety of different classes, construction technology, et cetera, as well as 15 in core academic areas, statistics, calculus, English, real... a wide array of classes that were offered, including ethnic studies, black studies, et cetera. And so, the total enrollment for this fall was 2,100 students that are receiving college credit while they're enrolled in high school, with a total yearly that we... our total yearly enrollment in city college classes where students are receiving credit that semester on a transcript is a total of about 4,000 students per year.
Currently, Santa Barbara City College provides support to 52 dual enrollment instructors. We conduct application workshops in all dual enrollment classes and review over 2,000 applications per semester. We constantly visit the high schools and conduct information workshops on dual enrollment, not only to the students but as well to the parents at parent-teacher nights, freshman nights, and things of that nature. And we also provide transfer information to all the students. Once they've enrolled in the class, we let them know where that class is transferable to.
Okay, so we have a lot of guidelines. We have an entire rulebook, but the two primary guidelines and standards that we work... that we go by is that in 1996 SB 292 was signed into law. This allowed high schools to collect full ADA for students that are enrolled in a minimum of 240-minute day. And so, this allows students to be in four high school classes, and the additional two or one can be city college dual enrollment or ROP. In addition to that, all of our dual enrollment instructors must meet the California Community College Minimum Requirements. For many vocational fields, we're talking about AA degrees, but many of our other classes require masters in that discipline, so masters in mathematics, masters in history, or in economics. And so, those are our two primary guidelines that we work on. Dual enrollment functions upon the request of a high school with the signature approval of the principal, so there is a formal request and review process to determine if the class should become a dual enrollment class.
And finally, of course, a concern is to maintain the academic integrity of classes on both ends. So we do ensure that the instructors following the course's study outline, that they meet the instructional minutes, usually in the high school it exceeds the instructional minutes required, that they use one of the approved textbooks, that the course is getting the same, and that students meet the prerequisites or the assessment standards. So we do administer our math and English assessment tests at the high schools for the convenience of students taking them and placing. So that's a very brief overview, and I'm sure you have some questions.
Well, Marilyn, I'd just like to add that John Romo and I were talking about this today. We think it's an outstanding program. Well over 2,000 students each semester are enrolled in dual enrollment courses on school... or high school campuses, and we think it's just a lead program. We've had other school districts come to us to find out how they can do the same thing with their community college. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? You have a question, go ahead.
Just one quick one, and it actually had to do with what Dr. Sarves just said. It's 2,100 students, so that's not repeater. So if someone's taking two classes, does it count as two?
That's a duplicated headcount.
Okay, okay, but even... I mean, it's still... would... could potentially be close to a quarter or a third of our... of all of our high school students. It's a lot.
We've really worked on expanding the offerings. When dual enrollment as a model start, or concurrent enrollment, it's called in some places, it really was really paralleling the AP courses and another way to fulfill that without taking the AP test, paying for the AP test. But we've really expanded in the career technical areas as well, and we feel that that's a really important part of the mission.
I want to say that it's another choice for students, another kind of class they can take. As a parent of a... many of my... all three of my kids have taken class, two of my kids have taken classes. How wonderful it's been. I've also had students in my classes that I teach, my psychology class, have been delightful to have high school students in my class. So it's wonderful on all accounts. I think it just provides... I mean, for example, psychology, they may not have that opportunity in high school, and yet some students come over and take it.
That's right. And if they take the class in the high school, they're also more likely to come and take a course in the summer or another course that they're interested in, gain tremendous confidence. And we're really a unique community that we have this relationship between the high schools and the college. And our students are really fortunate, and parents as well.
Thank you very much for coming today. Any other questions?
Thank you. Any others?
Well, I just wanted to echo some of that and just to thank my colleagues, because as you know, I also teach at Santa Barbara City College. But also, I just wanted to sort of appreciate, give a voice of appreciation for the expansion that's being done constantly, constantly expanding the offerings that are available to our students, because I think, as you said, back when Pablo was initially proposing this, it was very directed at certain kinds of courses. And now, there are so many opportunities, as Ms. Malacop was saying, more choice for our students. The fact that we are constantly adding more classes to this dual enrollment offering is a real opportunity for students who might otherwise think that they couldn't really handle college courses, or they weren't really sure what they would be like. I think it's a wonderful entree into educate... into higher education for a lot of students in a fairly safe feeling environment for them of their own campus. So just another voice of applause. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you for your attention.
We don't have any other presentations. Should we go on to the next item, superintendent's report? Good. I hope everyone had a good holiday with friends and family. I was able to read a number of wonderful books, which is quite a change from the usual hundred email-a-day literary diet I stay on. Our secondary students started this... started this last Wednesday, finishing their semester by this next Friday, by the 18th, so they'll be entering finals week soon. Our elementary students and staff returned just yesterday. From now through February 29, the elementary district will hold early enrollment for school year 2009. Enrollment packets will be available for kindergartners, students selecting a school of choice at any grade level, or students applying for a transfer to any other school within the district. For information or to schedule school tours, contact any of our schools, or call this phone number, 963-4338, which is the district office phone number, and ask for extension 278, so we can get you in connection with those schools. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on school and district matters. A copy is on display in the reception area or can be provided through the superintendent's office. The December 14 Board Brief was packed with items and information. I'll highlight only two of them. One was the updated Fast Facts. This is a quick guide to information about the district. It includes, for example, new information on the number of employees in the district. We have over 2,700 full-time and part-time employees in our school districts. Second, you will find pamphlets describing career technical courses and pathways at each of the schools in the Board Brief, courses in arts, media, and design, engineering and design, health and medical technology, video and TV production, agriculture, and building trades in construction. Most have capstone courses at the college level, and many of them are involving dual enrollment courses, as you just heard. Well, we're awaiting the January 10 Governor's Budget, and despite today's speech, we do not anticipate good news for educational funding. Well, I'm sure the district administration will be blamed for it, but we have already anticipated that we will not have revenues expected this last year, and that is primarily why we projected a budget cuts as we go into the spring. We will have a new multiple-year district budget projection based on the new proposed state budget, which will be provided as part of the interim report from School Services of California at the end of this month. The USS Ronald Reagan will be in Santa Barbara this weekend, and we're pleased that 30 sailors, actually, the number's up from that already, I think it's closer to 40, 45 sailors, will be doing some community service at our schools. Isn't this a turnabout? Here, they're in the service, and they come to our high schools. 20 of them have volunteered to do landscape work at Dos Pueblos High School. 10 will be painting at San Marcos School. A number of them, I don't have a final number yet, will be at Santa Barbara High doing various things. Did you know that our 32-member maintenance and operations staff completed more than 5,000 work orders, in excess of 21,000 work hours, from December 2006 through December 2007? They do a stellar job on a wide range of facilities projects to support our schools, and we're very proud of them. As you know, that's a staff that we keep very lean, and, boy, they service a lot of buildings and a lot of grounds. The Santa Barbara County Education Office released the 2007 Teachers Network Curriculum Catalog. I believe board members got a copy of this. If you didn't, take a look at it here. It recognizes all the creative and innovative teachers who received grants and/or awards in the 2006-07 school year. Many of our own talented teachers are included. Michael... or, excuse me, Michelle Humboldt and Carlos Cohen are featured both as outstanding teachers in this publication. And coming up in the days ahead, board members have a copy of this in front of them, and it's on the side table. San Marcos High School's Performing Arts Department is presenting the annual Advanced Acting Class, One Act Plays, this week. It's free to the community, and tomorrow is the last night, so get there soon. La Cumbre Junior High School will perform Bugsy Malone on January 18 and 19, and the Santa Barbara Education Foundation will be roasting Rod Latham, our own beloved Rod Latham, on January 18. The fundraiser will benefit Keep the Beat, and that will benefit Arts for Our Schools. Finally, Jack Richards, father of J.R. Richards, passed away just prior to Christmas. He was the first principal at Lockalina Junior High School. Our condolences to the family. We will host a memorial for Jack on Sunday, January 27, at 1 o'clock at the school. And that's it for tonight's superintendent's report. I believe we also have a student report tonight. Oh, go ahead. And with this, I believe we have Bria Little. Is that right, Bria? And Alex Fedlow? Both from Dos Pueblos High School.
Hi, thanks for having me. Santa Barbara High School raised about $2,000 for their Dollar Drive, which they then bought and delivered presents to the children in the district's Child Development Program. Comparatively, Dos Pueblos had a penny drive, and we collecting... collected a total of We also had a toy drive in honor of the holidays, where we donated over 100 toys and books to the Unity... the Unity Shop in the Community of Friends. And we had a canned food drive that donated over 2,500 cans. So we were really giving this season, and we're really proud of our student body. We are right in the middle of Decades Week, which is kind of a participatory week where every day is a different decade, or several decades. For instance, Mondays was twenties, thirties, forties. Today was fifties, tomorrow sixties, then seventies, then eighties. And we all dress up for the different decades, and then we have our Decades Dance. And that's always really fun. Before the break, we had Holiday Package, what was... which was a student-written, produced, and directed comedy sketch, and it was really successful. We sold out every night, I think. We had an Indian dance in honor of the Indian National Holiday Diwali, or the Festival of Lights, which had a really great turnout at lunch, so we're thinking of doing more intercultural things, and our co-commissioners of intercultural affairs are working on that. We finally had our new theater grand opening, and our musical is Beauty and the Beast, which I believe Santa Barbara is also doing, so that will be interesting. We have our next Beautify DP Day, January 19, and finals week is coming up, and the semester... the new semester starts on January 22. We're planning on having a DP Film Festival projected for the end of March, but we're not quite sure when that's going to be. Also, February 20, in the cafeteria from 7 to 9, we are having an invisible children's screening of the new documentary Black Sunday, and everyone is welcome to come. It's... there's a question and answer session after, and it's open to everybody. It's sponsored by the Humanitarian Club. And then, we've had a lot of success for our sports teams. Our boys' water polo team made it to first-round CIF playoffs. Our cross-country team, the girls, went to first-round CIF. Our girls' tennis team went to quarterfinals. Erica... Eskenazi and Erica Kano made it to second round, and Jordan Dokendorf made it to the fourth round of CIF playoffs. Our girls' golf team finished seventh in the southern section and won the northern first place in channel league. The commissioner of athletics is a football player and didn't write anything next to football. So I don't have a report for you for that. And then, girls' volleyball went to quarterfinals of CIF, and Sam Marcos didn't get back to me with a report, so I don't have that for you. But I'm sure they're doing great, otherwise. Are there any questions?
That was great. Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to public comments. Do we have any?
No.
No, none. Okay. Then we move on to the consent agenda. Do we have public comments for ours?
We do. We have two comments for one item on the consent agenda, so I'll go ahead and call them now. It's for item D16, which is the cancellation of contract award to Joe Sunrise Construction Incorporated for interior modifications for Santa Barbara Community Academy and La Cumbre Junior High School at the La Cumbre Junior High School site, et cetera. So first, I'll call Mr. Johnny Reese. Is Johnny Reese here?
Yes. Good afternoon, or good evening. I represent Sunrise Construction, and dang, this thing's loud. I know that there was a couple of miscommunications with the... with the bid documents, and as far as the mechanical contractor, we are going to get a letter of release and self-perform the... all the mechanical. I have letters from... from one other... from another job that we've done, that we performed multiple... we performed HVAC and electrical and other things like that. I have a letter from an architect with the Callexico City stating that... of how we were able to perform all the work. Also, there was a... an issue with the digital control system. Our... the electrician that we listed will be doing the electrical... the digital control system. Will be self-performing our roofing. There was an issue of who was going to perform the roofing. It is... we did not list it in... in our schedule values, but it's split up between our framing and mechanical line items. There's... I don't believe that there's any reason why this should... why you would have to pay 15 more thousand dollars to get this job done. We're fully capable of doing this and doing a well job, or a good job. Is there any questions, I guess? No?
We usually... we can't usually respond at this point.
Okay.
But thank you for your information.
Okay.
And then we have Michael Brannon.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak. Michael Brannon, Smith Electric Service, I'm president of the company. We've doing... been doing work here in the Santa Barbara School District for the last four years, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Basically, there's a lot of motion that gets attached to bids. Just to lead you through the process, once you, you know, check out a set of plans and documents, you review them, and you kind of get attached to the job personally, which is difficult at times, being here, that's how emotional you get attached to these jobs. Because the reason motions apply is that usually there's a budget that you're dealing with. There's usually a timeframe, which is a big timeframe. You have, you know, 60 days, 90 days, 120 days to get a job done. So your emotions attach that because you're already checking to see, you know, which manpower that it's going to take to get this job done on time. And so, anyway, back to... back to the reason we're here for the protest is that the school district provides the documentations for the general contractors to adhere by. What I mean is that you've got bid docs. The documentations tell you to list subcontractors with the correct license to perform the different trades that you need to perform job. I.e., if you have electrical contractor, you list him, he has a C10 license, he is able to perform that type of work, so on for mechanical, C20, plumbing, C16, C36. Where the general contractor that is here tonight protesting is that they don't have the license to perform that work, to self-perform that work. And if it's over one and a half, 1%, you have to list a subcontractor that can do that type of work. So therein lies the issue. What I'd like to say tonight before we're in... God, I did that in 55 seconds, rambling on here, is that we've been in business for 28 years in Central Coast, and we do millions and millions of dollars worth of work. And I'm not trying to put a feather in your hat, or the board, or the school district's hat, but back to what I said, is that we do a lot of work for school districts. San Maria Benita, San Maria High School, Lompoc, we did millions and millions of dollars on Lompoc, Atascadero, San Luis Mar School District, and Santa Barbara High School District is the number-one school district to work for. And so, I'd like that we put down the minutes because it's something to be proud of. You guys put a good set of specs out, you put a good set of drawings out. If you put a good set of drawings, you put a good set of specification out, you usually get good numbers. You get numbers that are not escalated, the architecture engineers budget, you stay within budget, and I just think... And I just think that the planning, the building division, Santa Barbara High School, should be amended. The Santa Barbara Board should welcome, I mean, not welcome, but there should be applause to yourselves because you put out a great, great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brannon. Thank you. Okay, so now we're on to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything from this consent agenda? Yes, Dr. Knoll?
D-3.
D-3?
D-6. D-16, 15.
Anyone else? Since these two gentlemen are here, should we deal with D-16 now? Rather than at the end? That makes sense.
Did somebody pull D-16?
Yeah. Oh, did you say D-15 or D-16, Dr. Knoll?
I said 15, one time.
Oh.
But I'm happy to pull item D-16 and see if there's any other comment that staff might want to make, either Mr. Mayros or Mr. Hetjank, and then, and then take a vote right now.
Okay. Sounds like a good plan. Mr. Hetjank, did you want to address this?
Thank you, Dr. Service, board members. I asked Carl Mayros to be here tonight to answer any questions that you may have that I couldn't answer because he's been the principal point of contact, not only with the letters that were sent to both contractors, but also in consultation with legal counsel. And I neglected to say in my backup information that every step of the way, we have been in contact and received advice from legal counsel. Probably the situation we're in is partly our fault. In a haste to award a contract, to get going on a project that everybody wanted to finish on time with an overworked staff, we, as a district, probably did not review the bid documents as closely as we should have. And a lot of the information came to light after the board awarded the contract. This contract was awarded on December 4. Then on December 6, we received information from Smith Electric citing irregularities. Based on this information, we sent a letter to Joe Sunrise requesting a detailed schedule of values and let them know that we'd received Smith's bid protest and included that in the correspondence. We received no response from Joe Sunrise Construction. Mr. Mayros called Joe Sunrise Construction and told them the district needed to, and Joe Sunrise Construction said we'd receive a schedule of values that same day. We did not receive that schedule of values. On December 12, we again sent a letter to Joe Sunrise Construction requesting a schedule of values and requested a response by 4:00 p.m. on December 14. We did not receive a response. On December 17, we sent a letter to Joe Sunrise Construction stating the district received no response and that we would recommend to the board that we cancel their contract. We then received a response. On December 18, the district notified Joe Sunrise Construction that their, we received their documents, that they were not timely, that the schedule of values was not detailed, and that the bid protest response did not address the pertinent issues that we asked them to address. Basically, the contractor did not respond in a timely manner for our request for information. The plumbing subcontractor listed in the bid is not a licensed plumbing subcontractor. That was our fault for not catching that. The mechanical engineer listed on their bid document is not a licensed mechanical engineer, or contractor, excuse me. And we should have caught that. Those two were our internal errors. No subcontractor was listed for the digital control system. This must be an approved NOVAR dealer. Joe Sunrise Construction cannot self-perform the work. As indicated in their response, they indicated they would self-perform all work they didn't list subcontractors for. But NOVAR, they're not an authorized dealer. They're not authorized to do the installation per our specifications. The testing and air balancing. Joe Sunrise Construction then indicated they would do their own testing and air balancing. Now they're testifying that they want to do their own mechanical work. You don't want the person that does the mechanical work to verify the testing and air balancing. That's a conflict of interest. You don't have your own company check the work of yourself. You have a separate company check that work. And the mechanic, so we never allow a mechanical subcontractor to do their own testing and balancing. We always require an outside person. No subcontractor was listed for the roofing. Joe Sunrise Construction indicated tonight that they would self-perform the roofing. However, as a district, we specify Trimco or equal for our roofing materials and specifications. So a contractor can pick Trimco or any other manufacturer that meets those specifications. Part of that specification includes a warranty. If anything ever goes wrong with that roof, it's not only the installer that's responsible, the manufacturer's responsible. And they'll stand behind the warranty even if the contractor that installed the roof is no longer in business. That's important, especially in light of the amount of roof leaks we've had. And with this rain, it's been relatively minor, especially on roofs that have been done recently under this specification. So Trimco will not sell their product nor warranty their product to Joe Sunrise Construction. It has to be an authorized roofer. It's authorized, it's been, it's proven to that manufacturer that they know how to install that roof and go through the proper steps. A lot of these values exceed 1.5% or 1%, where you have to list the subcontractors. And basically, it's leveling the playing field. In my opinion, Joe Sunrise Construction would be allowed to, after the fact, after contract award, go out and shop for subcontractors. It's easy to say we're going to self-perform, but during the project, when it comes time to do the work and we say, "You can't do this work," then they say, "Okay, we'll go out and find somebody that will." Well, that's shopping for a subcontractor after a contract award, and that's specifically what the public contract code is designed to avoid. That and collusion.
And any other questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
No. I mean, I'll make a motion to approve item D-16, which includes cancellation of the contract award to Joe Sunrise, uphold the bid protest by Smith Electric, and approve the contract to Brannon Inc. doing business with Smith Electric. This is all for the interior renovations of the community academy and La Cumbre Junior High School, at La Cumbre Junior High School.
Do I hear a second? Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Vote is 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Hetjank.
And I'd also like to move to approve the rest of the consent agenda with the exception of items D-3, D-6, and D-15.
And D-16. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. Pass 5-0. And we are going to move on to the action agenda to E-1, acceptance of the annual reports on statutory school fees, developer fees for the Santa Barbara Elementary and High School districts for 2005, '06, and 2006, '07.
And Mr. Hetjank, our director of facilities and operations, who will be making this report.
Let me switch gears here a second. You have before you the annual reports for fiscal year 2005, '06, and 2006, '07. First of all, let me apologize for the tardiness of the 2005, 2006 report. In 2004, 2005, the district hired a consultant to do your developer fee reports. At that time, they did an annual report and a five-year report. In my, and they labeled that cover sheet '05, '06. So in my files, every time I opened it up, I saw something that said '05, '06, but everything behind it was for the previous year. So I apologize for being extremely tardy with, with the '05, '06 report. Basically, what you have before you is a report for the elementary districts and the high school districts for both years, showing the amount of fees collected, showing how those fees were expended, and showing proposed usage for fees in the future. So let me start with the developer fee report for the elementary district for '05, '06. Basically, on page 2 of that report shows a beginning balance and ending balance. Then you go to page 3, the amount we collected, the interest we earned, and the categories that are required for a report on how you spend the money. In addition to that, I've included a table at the back showing detailed expenditures of how we spent that money. And then, item F indicates what we plan on spending the money for, for items within the future. And so I would start by asking if there's any questions on the developer fee report for the elementary district for '05, '06, or I can do it any way the board pleases.
I have a, an overall question, and it wasn't addressed by the ed code that was attached. Who sets the ranges for the developer fees? I mean, it seemed to indicate that the agency sets the fees, but I'm sure that there are statutory limitations.
There are statutory limitations in, I believe it was 2000, the district went out and did a developer fee report and established the rate at which we charge. And we have not changed that rate since 2000. That rate is raised slightly every year by the legislature. We collect developer fees not only for our high school district and our elementary district. We also collect the fees for all the feeder districts and then pass on their share. So if you are in the Galida School District, you would come in and pay a developer fee, half of which would go to our high school district, half goes to Galida Elementary. Galida Elementary charges a different rate than us. They did a study after us where the statutory allowable fee was a few cents higher, and I didn't bring those rates with me, but I can furnish them to you in a board brief. So if you're doing a development in the city of Galida, residential development, you're going to pay a higher fee for that permit than you would if you were in the city of Santa Barbara. And so each, each elementary district and each high school district sets their own rates. It's a, it's a board action, and the rate at that. Usually, when you do your study to set the fee or raise the fee, you set it at the amount allowable by the legislature at that time. So as the fees go up every year, the districts have an option of going out, doing a new study, doing a new justification study, and then deciding if they want to raise that fee.
I'm not suggesting that we do a new justification study, but it would certainly be interesting to see what the maximum rate is right now, set by the legislature, and also to see what our surrounding feeder districts are charging in comparison to us.
I'd be happy to furnish that in the board brief.
Actually, the statutory rate's set to be increased again at the end of January. It's set by the State Allocation Board every two years. There's a biannual inflation adjustment. And I don't know what we are collectively, but I think the statutory rate right now is $2.63 for residential, and I think we're much less than that.
We are, we are around 2, I believe, 216. And I think Galida is the highest, around 230.
Yeah, and so generally, what happens is that every couple of years, when the statutory inflation adjustment is made, then districts will go out, as Dave alluded to, and update their justification documents. And then after the board adopts those justification documents, they can impose a higher fee 60 days after the adoption of that document.
Approximately two years ago, we were contacted by a consultant who wanted to go out and do a study for us. And so we asked him to look at our enrollment figures. And at that time, they advised us that if we spent the money on a study, chances are, we wouldn't be able to justify raising the fees. That was only one consultant. I didn't pursue it any further. We'd be glad to look into that.
So just to clarify, we, we must do a justification study, or can we merely do a comparison with surrounding districts?
To do an increase, you must do a justification document. And one of the things that Dave and I talked about, there was a modification to the code. And I could point to it, I was just looking at it. But basically, what it says is that now you can use developer fees to basically refurbish, to maintain the existing level of capacity, where basically, there was always a lot of confusion about, is it legitimate to use it for modernization? And, you know, the test always used to be the nexus, which was basically the nexus between new residential or commercial and industrial development, and the need for new facilities. And this piece of legislation makes clear that you can use it for refurbishment or modernization, which I would think would bolster your case to do a new study, to increase the rate. But I would defer to legal counsel on that.
Is that, that's existing law, or that's?
That's brand-new law as of last year.
You don't have the citation of that?
It's right in your packet. What item is this again?
E-1.
I'm just doing it from memory. Yeah, it's 6601, and it's...
It's in the back of the...
It's in the back. 6601, I don't, gee. If you go to 6601 and go to the second page of it, to the last paragraph, G, it says, "A fee shall not include the cost attributable to existing deficiency in public facilities, but may include the cost attributable to increased demand for public facilities reasonably related to the development project in order to, one, refurbish existing facilities to maintain the existing level of service."
But to have a justification study, you have to show increasing enrollment, don't you?
That was the old test. And what this basically says is that you, as long as you can show that you need those facilities and need to modernize those facilities to house your capacity, you can meet that test.
Because these reports say that we're charging $1.25 per square foot for residential.
And that would be probably because there's a proportional share. You're splitting it with other districts, unless you're collecting it in the elementary and high school. If you had a project that was within the elementary and high school district, you'd be collecting, what did you say, Dave? The rate's 212? 216?
Yes, something like that.
We're collecting 216, and it gets divided up so that we get the dollar to?
On, if you're in the city and you, and you're a developer or a homeowner, and you come in and pay for your permit, half the money's going to go to our elementary district, and half the money's going to go to our high school district. So when it says there, so we're, let's see.
And then you have varying, varying rates if it's outside of the city proper, and you're split with another feeder district.
Yes, elementary. So are you saying, Mr. Hetjank, that, that somebody who's doing a remodel inside the city of Santa Barbara pays $1.25 to the elementary district and then $1.25 to the secondary district?
Not necessarily for a remodel. In order to kick in the need for a, to pay a developer fee, you need to be building or changing at least 500 square feet of your residence. So if you have a residence and you're adding 400 square, 400 square feet to that residence, there is no impact for a developer fee. But if you're adding more than 500 square feet, there would be. If you're demolishing part of that house and rebuilding it, then you would be. But if you're just doing a remodel without changing the structure or the walls, things like that, you would not have to pay a developer fee.
Could you explain a little bit how, how it works? I, I read that section of the government code and didn't quite understand something. It says that the local agency, as a condition of approval, the local agency shall do all of the following. And number two on that list is, "To identify the use to which the fee is to be put. If the use is financing public, public facilities, the facilities shall be identified." Which seems to imply that at some point, you submit something, or we approve some list of, of projects identified in terms of specific facilities. Is that correct?
That, that happens in your justification document. When you do a developer fee justification document, one of the components is a facilities plan where you've identified capital facilities in that developer fee justification document. Now, whether that's current or not anymore is a subject to debate.
I'd like to see that.
I can furnish that also to the board.
Because, because I get the, the feeling then, particularly, because then it's sound, it sounds, as I read this, like you're bound to that list. Except the clause that you just read, which I read a little differently than you did.
Well, one of the issues is generally, you'll see statements in developer fee documents that not only deal with and identify the list of needs, but it'll also have broad language that says something to the effect that developer fees can be used to lease portables on an emergency basis and do all those kind of ancillary things that come up from day to day. So I don't think you're as, you're as bound.
Exactly what I'd like to understand, how much, how much latitude there is? How restraint, how many restraints there are, and how often you update it.
The, the previous advice we've received from legal counsel was that as long as we could make the nexus between the developer fee project that we were doing and growth, that we would be, that the board would have latitude to approve that as a new priority, even though the project may not have been specifically listed in the previous study, which established the fee.
The paragraph 3 says that the relationship you have to establish is a reasonable relationship between the fee's use... between the fee's use and the type of development project on which the fee is imposed. What's that mean?
I don't know if I can answer that right off the top of my head.
That's generally termed as the nexus requirement, that basically you have to show, as Dave said, some kind of relationship between the development project, whether it's residential or commercial and industrial development, and the need or the impact created by that. And then the use of the fee to mitigate the impact of that on the school district.
Is that broadly interpreted?
It's fairly broadly interpreted.
Typically, it's assumed that if something is being built as a new commercial building, that there will be increased employees in that building, and those increased employees will have an impact on district enrollment. Likewise, new housing or expanding housing would have the impact of having an impact on district enrollment by additional people producing additional children for our district.
But it's not assumed, it puts the burden on the district to show that, the nexus. Is that correct?
Well, you have to demonstrate the nexus to basically adopt to justify the fee. That's correct.
So that all takes, the occasion for that is this justification.
Justification study.
That's correct. And usually, I would concur with what Dave's opinion is, is that generally, advice is not to update your justification document unless you're going to increase fees, or if there's been something substantially different in the demographic, you know, aspects of your school district. But like I said, one of the issues that I think is significantly different is the amendment to the Government Code section, which makes clear that you can use, you know, these dollars on all kinds of modernization projects, which I think, you know, probably bolsters the case to go back and do a new study.
And I think we can easily show the justification need for more modernization projects.
Can I ask, can I be more specific here about this list? On, what is this, page four or something? I don't even know if it has a page number. A lot of it is about the Cesar Chavez portables. As a charter school, do they, I've forgotten how this works, do they pay rent for their facilities as a charter school?
They do pay, I guess you could use the term rent, but they pay a fee, and probably Mr. Gonzalez can better describe how that fee is assessed. It's basically a fee based on maintenance and deferred maintenance for that facility. And those things are outlined in the MOUs with each of the charters as to what fee they pay. Most of the things on this list had to do with, we added two portables at that site for Cesar Chavez, and we also leased an additional four portables at that site for Cesar Chavez. And so those are, those are a majority of what you'll see here for the '05-'06 school year for the elementary district.
Okay. And we don't get reimbursed in any way for that, then?
No, the, I think the Education Code requires the district to provide the space if there are ADN district students, and it is rent-free, but it charges a set of fees, as Mr. Hetjung has been describing.
And there's also fees for administrative, aside from the facility fee, there's administrative overhead and other things that...
Under Proposition 39.
Supervisory fees, yes.
Some questions as well. I'm sorry, were you through, Ms. Melfler?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I was just looking at, I was wondering if it's typical for the fees, the totals, to remain relatively constant, or if there's a wide fluctuation from year to year? And I was noticing, for example, that in the elementary district, it looked like there was relative constancy, that it increased, it looked like, in '05-'06 by about $110,000, and then again in '06-'07 by about, by $164,000, a bigger increase. But in the, in the secondary district, there was one year where it went up by, '05-'06, the difference between the beginning balance and the ending balance was $312,000, something like that. If my math was correct, which could be questionable, it was a much, much smaller increase in And I was wondering, is that just how the ball bounces in terms of when people are doing developments, et cetera? Or is there any kind of sort of pattern to what we can expect?
Right. A large development would cause an increase in that one year. Let me give you an example. When Cottage Hospital, if and when they pull permits to reconstruct, I'm going blank here, I want to say French hospital, but I'm thinking of a different, St. Francis. They give a different city. If and when they reconstruct St. Francis Hospital into housing, that's, that's a, that's, that permit would require developer fees. That would be a substantial project. That would be a great amount of fees that would come in during that one year. So any major construction of a large housing tract or a large commercial development would skew that year if the permit was filled in that year. That's why I chose to give you a five-year report, so you can kind of see on average of what we would do. I've been kind of frugal in spending developer fees, not knowing how our ending balance would be with our I-98 and our Measure V, and what our needs would be. We have been saving fees at the high school district for the last couple of years because we were trying to establish new construction eligibility for a 50-50 match to replace portables at San Marcos with a permanent building. When we get to the high school district, you'll see there's also some other needs there. So in reality, developer fees now, with the new legislation, could be used almost for the same types of projects that you would have approved in your priority list for your I-98 and your Measure V bond funds. Kind of six to one, half a dozen to the other. You could take, you could take developer fees and, for instance, Dos Publos High School, the theater. We could have used developer fees for that project and freed up bond money for other projects. It's kind of six to one, half a dozen to the other. You look at the district as a whole, and you set your priorities, and you work forward towards that, and you try and maintain a reserve. At the same time, you need to expend developer fees in a timely manner, or they need to be returned to the people that paid the fees. So you don't bank the fees forever. You collect the fees with a purpose, and then you go out and you do that construction, reconstruction, based on those fees.
So, I'm sorry, can I just ask one more question then? I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what F represents in all of the reports. Because in each of those, you've given us a list, it says at the, at the close of whichever year it happens to be, the district determined that it did have sufficient funds for the following.
In the...
Do those, when it says did have sufficient funds, is it referring only to these developer funds, or does it mean, does it include general funds?
No, just the developer fees.
Just the developer funds?
In other words, we determined that we have sufficient fees to plan and hopefully accomplish these projects. So what I've done in Section F for the current, for the latest report, because the '05-'06 represents what we spent in '06-'07. So the '06-'07 report would represent recommended expenditures for '07-'08 that would come before the board for approval. Each of these expenditures on here comes before the board for approval. With the SELPA regional housing costs, I'm not sure how that comes to the board, whether it's rolled over. I've never been involved in that portion of the developer fee.
Could you explain what that means?
That is, I asked Shirley Corpus to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that is the money that we pay to the county SELPA for housing our special education students at areas other than our district facilities. I see nobody correcting me, so I...
Maybe if we could put a question mark after that. Is that correct, Ms. Corpus?
That's, that's where the money goes for the special education.
Oh, go ahead, grab the microphone.
And why is it just the secondary and not the elementary?
It is both.
It's both.
Yes.
One here.
I assume that, I assume that it was placed there so it wouldn't have an impact on the general fund, but I, and the policy and the practice was in place long before I came to the district, and so I'm not sure when it started, how it started, or how it continues, but it appears there every year.
Well, it's very...
Based on the amount spent.
One of the numbers is pretty big.
Yes.
Huge.
Actually, that is probably a fairly good idea, because usually what you would see is facilities cost rolled into an excess cost program billback, and that would hit all of your unrestricted general fund. So whoever set that up had pretty good foresight, because what they're doing is basically shifting that portion of the burden off to a restricted developer fee account, which is legitimate, because it's housing students that are actually the district students that are being educated by the county office. So I've never seen that, but I like it.
I would be interested in seeing some of the documentation of how that, you know, how they notify us, how they calculate the amount. Very, that's a very interesting idea.
Well, it sounds like for something, we're almost, well, we are out of town time, but I would, Ms. Parker, you were...
And we're still just on the elementary. And we have a speaker on this, too. Just noticing that you have some big projects planned for '07-'08 and '08-'09 for elementary out of developer fees. I'm just questioning, what, recommended that future funds be used for matching E-rate dollars for upgrades to Adams. I think that that could use a little clarification.
Okay. We have applied for E-rate, and at the next board meeting, we will ask you to approve a contract for E-rate. That contract is totally contingent upon the availability of E-rate funds, both from the government and E-rate funds being available from the district. That's part of the contract document. So this is one of those contracts, when you approve it, you're not obligated to spend it if you don't have the money when the time comes, when the state or the federal government gives you the E-rate. This is to do the work to add data to our schools that was not able to be accomplished due to the scale-back of the I-98 bond funds at those schools when we scaled back and did the ADA work only. So basically, now we have a chance to get a great deal of matching funds, greater than we would have under the state modernization project in order to accomplish this work. We'll pay about 15% of that contract cost, and E-rate will pay about 85%. This will enable us in the future to do things like voice-over IP phone systems to, again, a little more expensive upfront, but a significant savings to the general fund for the monthly charge for all those lines in the long run, again, spending a little bit of capital money to free up a great amount of general fund money. And so, just as, as a, because I'm, I put that in there because we will be bringing that to you in the future. Again, here are the items, the relocation and configuration of portables at Washington. Originally, that was scheduled to happen with I-98 bond funds. We're not going to have enough I-98 bond funds. We probably would have if we were able to spend the money in the county treasurer's office for our refinance of the bond funds, but we're not spending that yet, so I have to plan right now on spending developer fees to meet those ADA requirements per the court-ordered settlement.
One final question, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
If we could jump ahead to the plans for spending the secondary developer fees. I believe this, the request for this discussion came from a meeting that I was absent from, so I watched the tape, and it was when Mr. Abou Shair was here to make a presentation about the DP Engineering Academy, and the question was raised, could developer fees be used for any of the architectural fees or any other costs connected to it? And the developer fee plan that you have in front of us indicates particular uses for the money. So the question is, when will we know about the bond refinance? Because obviously, it's pots of money that could be shifted around for different purposes, but Measure V funds could not be used for anything having to do with the Engineering Academy. So it's a bit complicated because there are different...
I wish I had a good answer as to when the AG is going to give that opinion.
We've been waiting for the Attorney General opinion on that for months and months. It's been about eight months, and we've been expecting it any month now.
Well, I mean, I don't want to, you know, add any value judgment. I think that the kitchen at Santa Barbara High is critical. It plays into whether or not they could potentially close their campus for ninth graders. I mean, there are many important issues connected to that kitchen completion. But using developer fees on the Engineering Academy or for part of the Engineering Academy is also highly attractive. It leverages $3 million in state matching funds for their construction. So I have a really strong interest in both, and I'd really like to get...
And also, if we don't qualify for new construction, state matching funds for San Marcos High School, we could come back to the board and say, here's the new scenario. Now, if this is the amount of construction, this is the amount that we have, do we postpone that? So if we do postpone that, there's possible money that could be freed up to use for Engineering Academy, and also the possibility that you, that you stated. You know, you just have to, we'll just have to look at the finances at the time that we find that out, bring it to the board, and let the board make a decision. I did want to provide you with a, because we collect for the feeder districts, I'm able to look at how much money we sent those districts and how much money our high school district has, and tell you that in our high school district, these are the percentages, basically, of those fees as to where they come from, from the feeder districts. So probably of our high school district developer fees, 46% comes from development within the geographical area of our elementary district. I wouldn't have thought it would have been that high, but it is.
I would, go ahead.
No, I'm just wondering when we might expect to hear from the Attorney General's office so that we could come to some sort of resolution over, over all of this? No way of knowing.
I'll call him tomorrow.
Yeah?
Yeah, I will.
Tell him this is harder said so.
Because, you know, I mean, we've been waiting a long time. I will call and see what's going on.
I would like to see us, on a routine basis, maybe annually, have this discussion and set some priorities. In my years on the board, this never happened. And so it kind of, it gives the process more of an ad hoc, although when I, when I look at your report, I see that, I see that it is not so ad hoc, but...
Right.
But that's in retrospect, and I'm talking about forward-looking.
Well, now that we've learned how to do this ourselves at workshops, thank you for sending us to the cash workshop up in Sacramento, because we learned how to do developer fee reports. Now we don't have to spend $5,000 every year for each report for a consultant in order to produce this information and get it to you and understand it, and know that we're meeting all the statutory requirements and not have to depend on somebody. And you're right, Dr. Noel, Section F is basically my recommendations to the Board of Education for what they do in the future with developer fees, and I hope to be more timely in these reports. And if you'd like to have a discussion before you receive the report, we could do that also.
Yeah. I, you know, I understand that our I-98 priority list sort of interacts with it, but just looking at the developer fee, setting priorities for the fees, I know we don't know how much we're going to get, but it sort of gives a set of, even contingent priorities.
Okay, let's hear a, we have a public comment?
Yes, Lisa Daniels.
Hello, Madam President and fellow members of the board. My name is Lisa Daniels, and I'm a member of the Dos Publos Engineering Academy Foundation Board and a parent of both a current and former student in the Engineering Academy. Last week, our board president, Sandra Seal, sent a letter to Dr. Malakoff thanking the Board of Education for the progress that the district has already made with the planning and design of the new Dos Publos Engineering Academy facility. And I want to reiterate how much we appreciate the cooperative spirit. We have experience working with members of the board and with district personnel. Our foundation board is requesting that the Board of Education allocate $487,500 from the developer fees fund to cover the $487,500 contract with KBZ Architects for the DPEA facility. That the board... with KBZ Architects for the DPEA facility that the board approved on November twenty-seventh, rather than asking the foundation to repay the funds that are being fronted by the district. We're actively fundraising the matching three million dollars for the facility. And such significant financial backing from the Santa Barbara School District and Board of Education will be an excellent example to potential donors of the value the district places in the engineering academy. Upon review of how developer fees were spent in the last two years, funds have been directed to cover KBZ architect fees associated with projects at various campuses, which would make this commitment, um, consistent with past practice. As you've already been talking about, there is a recommendation in Section F of the two thousand six oh seven annual developer fee report for eight different projects, plus a recommendation for the future funds for the kitchen renovation. And we ask that you consider modifying the two thousand seven, two thousand eight annual plan to include the four hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the KBZ architect costs, even if it happens to be spread across multiple years. So just wanted to put that out as maybe a possibility. Uh, the awarding of this, this substantial three million dollar grant from the state is deserving of support at all levels, from the community to the district. We appreciate your consideration of this request.
Thirty seconds.
It is our vision that this project will benefit the entire district. Thank you. So if you have any questions, Kathy Logan and other board members here, and, or if you want us to take any questions back, we can.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Smith. It's been already eight years since we did justification, right?
Is it two thousand, Dave?
I hate, I hate to quote numbers, but yes, I believe the study was done in two thousand. I have it in my office.
And do you caution that there's a risk involved in, in, in renewing that process? Because we're way below the threshold.
Well, one of the issues is, is the determination of capacity. And the issue with respect to capacity is whatever the fifty dash oh three says is your capacity. And what I mean by that is developer fee legislation and state school facilities legislation are intertwined. Because what developer fee legislation was born out of was the fact that in the initial creation of the state school building program, it was supposed to be a three-legged stool. The state would provide state bond proceeds, the developers would provide one-third through developer fee contributions, and locals would provide contributions through general obligation bonds or other sources. So almost anytime you look at developer fee legislation, it rests on calculations and methodology that's included in the state school facilities program. And when capacity is established or determined in the state school facilities program, there's a number of exclusions on paper, which basically reduces your capacity and does not mirror your actual physical capacity. So the first issue is, what is your capacity on the fifty dash oh three? And if your capacity is far less than what your actual physical capacity is, that's the capacity that's going to be used versus your enrollment in a developer fee study. Well, I mean. And then the next issue is, is, I alluded to before, is the fact that it used to be a test of looking at enrollment projection, which is basically a growth-driven model versus capacity. The new amendment to the Government Code section makes clear that you can use it for modernization to maintain an existing level of capacity. So obviously, capacity is a core issue here. And I haven't talked to Dave about what the fifty dash oh three looks like and all those kind of things. And so that would require some staff analysis before we made a recommendation to go out and have another study done. And we would probably consult with counsel. Now, one of the other issues we'd look at is if we thought it was righteous and we could move forward, you'd look at if you could go to the new rate and look at the number of square footage and permits over the last year, and look at how much more money you would generate, and then talk about where you'd go from there, so.
Can we, can we have that? Can we ask that the, that the initial test, initial evaluation be done? See whether we're at a point where we, where we're making.
Well, I've heard your comments. We'll certainly take a look at whether we ought to update the justification study.
Why, Sheriff, Mrs. Harter is concerned that, that, that's a, that's a big grant. We really should be doing everything we can to, to match that.
Actually, I, I'd like to make a motion to deal with E-one. And it would be, you know, to accept the annual report on the statutory fees for elementary and high school. But I'd like to include with that a request to bring the oh seven, oh eight expenditures for secondary back to the board when we have more clarification on the bond refinance. So, I mean, okay. Then I'll, I'll move to accept, uh, the annual report on statutory fees for the elementary and high school districts for oh five, oh six, and oh six, oh seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, it's passes five, zero. Great. Uh, we are on to E-two, uh, second reading of the tentative agreement and the proposed calendar between the Santa Barbara School District and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association.
And Dr. Robertson, our Director of Personnel, will present this.
Thank you, and good evening, and happy new year. At the December eleventh, two thousand and seven board meeting, the final negotiated calendar was submitted at the, for its first reading. On Friday, December fourteenth, two thousand and seven, I was informed by Lain Wheeler, President SBTA, that the proposed calendar was ratified by the teachers. The proposed calendar for elementary, secondary, and year-round schools is attached or was given to an attachment for a final reading. You'll find a separate calendar for secondary schools and one calendar for the elementary. Even though they're exact same calendar, the difference just has to do with parent conferences and trimesters as opposed to, um, semesters. But it's exact same, uh, calendar. And then there's also a year-round calendar, which for the first time in a while, Cleveland and Santa Barbara Community Academy will be actually on the exact same calendar in days as well. So it is recommended that the board take action and approve the tentative agreement for the proposed two thousand eight, two thousand nine calendar. Please.
Thank you. We've seen this many times. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, nicely done, Dr. Robertson. Um, I will move, uh, to, uh, approve the tentative agreement for the proposed calendar between the Santa Barbara School Districts and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association.
Second.
And I just have a question on this, is how do you plan to communicate to parents and, uh, feeder districts and the community about, uh, the new calendar, if it's.
Barbara Kiani and I and Linda Steele have worked on a plan. Barbara's going to do certain things through the, uh, online and e-news. And then I have already ready, sitting at my table, faxes to go out to all of the surrounding school districts who would be impacted by, um, our calendar and SBCC as well. So that'll go out first thing in the morning.
Maybe we could say, just in case people are watching, that the start date would be August twenty-fifth. That would be across all elementary and junior high and high schools, with the exception of the two-year-round schools. There would be a two-week winter break and a one-week spring break.
And that August twenty-fifth is the same start date, even if we didn't pass the calendar, that's, that's what the existing calendar would have started on.
That's right. Good.
Thank you, Dr. Sarver.
And the ending date will be June fourth?
June fourth. For elementary, secondary.
Very exciting. Okay, a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Nope. Passes five, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. You did a great job on this.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Uh, E-three, approval of the oh seven, oh eight consolidated application for funding categorical aid programs, Part Two, for the Santa Barbara Elementary and High School Districts.
And Michael Gonzalez, our Director of Compliance and Categorical Programs, will make this presentation.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Uh, what we have before you is the consolidated application for funding categorical programs, Part Two. It's, uh, as you know, the consolidated application is a two-part program. Part Two specifically reports to the, uh, Department of Education, the, uh, expenditures in selected programs. And it's a process by which the Department of Education notifies the district of the allocations for eight different state and federal categorical programs. If, on the second page, uh, down at the bottom, under Fiscal Impact, I have summarized for both the elementary and secondary district what the, uh, entitlements from each, for each of the eight different programs were for the elementary and high school district. In addition, I've included a carryover amount. There's also, this Part Two also requires selected, uh, in selected programs, it requires the district to report, uh, program participation. And, uh, we're required to submit this application to the State Department of Education by January thirty-first. And so we're bringing to you, uh, not only the elementary application, but the secondary application as well for your approval.
Any questions?
I have a couple of quick questions.
Go.
One is, the, there's a large amount of EIA carryover. Um, that's because it came late to the district, is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, as you may recall, uh, we received a notification early in the school year that we were going to get an increased EIA when the state budget was very healthy. However, those monies did not arrive till March, and a decision was made to advise schools not to spend those monies until a, a good plan was organized. And so those monies were carried over.
And my other quick question is, community day school. For their, uh, on the page, it shows the school-level free and reduced-price meal eligibility data collection. They have zero enrolled for free and reduced lunch, and that surprised me.
It, uh, it is surprising. I, I will share with you that, uh, a decision was made several years ago that we would not, uh, attempt to qualify the community day school or the continuation schools for Title One. In that, we knew that should we take that, uh, should we move in that direction, we would very quickly qualify these schools for program improvement. And so a staff decision was made to a former assistant superintendent not to include, uh, community day school and the continuation schools eligibility for Title One. As a result, we don't actually work very closely to monitor free and reduced lunch applications at those schools.
Because I would hope that the students that need free and reduced lunch are getting free and reduced lunch.
The, the applications are available, and, and I would have to specifically sit down with Kathy Abney to find out, uh, why and report back to you. But, but again, uh, the general notion is that we do not want them to be eligible for Title One. We compensate, uh, for the loss of those funds through some additional EIA funds that are made available to them.
I'm, I'm happy to make a motion. I don't know if we want.
Is there any other discussion? Any, anybody else? No? Go ahead.
I just had a real quick comment, and, um, that is, we had, out of a, about six million dollars in total, entitlement to the district, to both districts combined, we had almost a million-dollar carryover, which to me seems very high. Um, do we have any explanation for that, or any plan to address that?
I, I will share with you the plan. Uh, I will share with you that over the last three years, that carryover has been reduced. And in the elementary district in particular, had it not been for that large carryover EIA, that number would be significantly reduced. You, you may recall that last year, we came to the board and shared with you that, uh, last year, we implemented a new process that said if schools did not spend those categorical funds during that school year, the district would not permit those schools to carry over those funds unless they had a plan that were approved by the assistant superintendents, that those monies would be collected by the district and redistributed to all schools as a way to motivate schools to spend those monies appropriately. And, uh, that system is working. Uh, we're now in its, uh, actually, its first year of operation. And so we hope that next year, when we come before you, that you will not find a large amount of carryover. In addition, last year, we began a series of trainings that were made available to all K-12 schools to let them know about, uh, how important it is to spend the money, because it's morally the correct thing to do, and legally, it's the correct thing to do. And the two assistant superintendents have done fine work training principals in that regard. Thank you.
Ms. Harter?
No, I'll move to approve the oh seven, oh eight consolidated application for funding categorical aid programs, Part Two, for the Santa Barbara Elementary and High School Districts.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Passes five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we move on to E-four, approval of a plan to provide longevity salary increase for selected management positions.
And I've been asked to bring this item back. At our November nineteenth board meeting, we had a discussion about comparable, uh, salaries in, in comparable positions. Uh, at the time, we discussed concerns about attracting talented people to future openings in positions with salary ranges at the high end of the range that was well below our comparable districts. I noted that we had hired a new principal at, at high school level, uh, for each of the past five years, and that we've had seven people at the helm of business services over the past seven years. The board at the time requested a recommendation for making salaries for such positions more attractive. Let me say first, before talking about the recommendation, that the study of comparable districts that was asked for by the board examine principals, directors, assistant superintendents, and that most positions in the district were comparable at the low end of the range. But some of those positions were some five percent or further below at the high end of the range. Uh, positions like high school principals, high school assistant principals, junior high assistant principals, director of food service nutrition, director of special education, director of personnel, and assistant superintendents were below at the higher end. Now, normally, a district would, uh, would simply rescale those positions. However, in our case, our current budget projections call for budget cuts in the near future. And instead of rescaling the positions, I would like the board to consider a longevity increase, and, and I'll make a recommendation about that, although there are a number of options here. A longevity increase based upon management employees who have been in selected positions for a certain period of time in a management position in our district. The advantage of a longevity, uh, step is that it may encourage employees to remain in the district, which will provide greater stability to the district. And other districts similar to ours, in fact, I have quite a list here of other districts and their longevity steps. It's quite common, uh, have steps for anything from five years to thirty years of service. I, I don't see any smooth scale between them, but, uh, but a district may have a longevity step for, for five years of management in the district, ten years of management in the district, ten, fifteen years, and so forth. Or another district may start it at fourteen years and then go to seventeen years. Uh, there doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason. That being so, I feel, I, I felt we ought to fit it to our own needs. Now, the estimated cost of providing a five percent longevity increase beginning at the ninth year of service for all of the selected management positions that I just identified, uh, would be thirty-five thousand dollars. The cost to the district is high, I believe, at this time, given our, our current budgets and the budgets that we're facing on the multiple-year projections. As an alternative, I propose selecting only key positions which would decrease the cost considerably. A number of these positions have seen high turnover rates. And in fact, this is how I would identify those positions. They've seen high turnover rates, and only one employee is currently in his or her eighth year of service. Uh, those positions, I believe, should be the high school principals, director of nutrition services, director of special education, director of personnel, and assistant superintendents. The reason for selecting these positions for longevity increment would be to align the salaries with, with other comparable districts. the salaries with other comparable districts, since we are either currently advertising or anticipate advertising those positions in the near future, and we've experienced difficulty in the past in attracting a pool of high-level applicants. At times, we've simply been lucky, but there have been a lot of times when we've gone through the entire applicant pool, and there really is only one shining star in that pool. I mean, we haven't had a number of people that we can have the comfort of selecting from. The one exception to this is the director of personnel services, and that position is aligned with the high school principal positions. Well, the cost of a longevity step for the 2008 or '09 school year is anticipated to be $6,800 from the general fund, and anticipated increases in subsequent years are expected to be small, because we have not had people in these positions for very much time at all. In fact, we could go to additional longevity steps. We could install one at the year nine, we can install another 5% increase at year, say, 14, you know, some five years down the line. That would allow us to advertise a position at a higher level. And let me just give you an example. Santa Ana just came out with an advertisement for a director, or excuse me, an associate superintendent for business services at $185,000. Stockton is advertising at $180,000. Those are larger districts, and that's perhaps an unfair comparison to us. We don't look very good when you're scanning the list of other districts and you see 185, 180. Then you see Brea Olinda with only 6,000 students, advertising at $160,000. We buy, and that's in the latest JIS here, we are advertising at $136,000. A 5% increase as a longevity step would allow us to advertise at $143,000. Another 5% would allow us to advertise at, what, $7,000 more than that?
Madam Chair? Actually, that's my confusion, is clearly there's a very low cost associated with a longevity increase. I mean, I certainly don't want members of the public to think that we're talking about across-the-board salary increases. But you feel that that helps in the hiring process because you can advertise a higher number, even though the person wouldn't be necessarily hired at that number? Yes?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
In fact, that's what these other districts do.
I don't get it.
Yeah.
I don't get it at all. You have to be, and that's why I asked you in my email whether you're talking about eight years in the district or eight years of managerial experience combined outside and inside. How does something that doesn't kick in for eight years serve as an incentive to attract people to come into the district? That's asking for a kind of a long view on the part of applicants. It seems to me it has no motivational or incentive effect whatsoever.
Well, I'll say on contraire, that people see that, especially maybe if you look at these ads, and you see our ad compared to others, maybe you can show this, we can pass this down, you'll see how different we look. And in fact, the bottom end is the same, it's the top end that's different. And I assume that other districts, it's the same thing. They're a bigger spread, they're saying, "Well, if you stay with us, you can go all the way up to this." And we're saying, "You stay with us, you can only go to this far."
Well, we'll just go down this list and find out when these various positions would be eligible, because the assistant superintendent for business services, we know, will be nine years from now. What about the other positions? Only one is eligible now?
Only one is eligible now.
Or soon?
Yes.
How many others are eligible? What are we talking about here?
Three years down the road, the next one would be eligible.
Well, but I thought our priority was to be competitive, to hire a CBO. I thought that was the main prime mover of this whole discussion. At least, that's the way you've represented it.
If you think experience in the district is not the important thing, if you think just experience, or whether experience in the management position is not the important thing, but experience in the district, or you think that some lower threshold should be used for that, please present it.
Well, I don't know why we just don't advertise for a CBO at whatever amount of money we want to pay a CBO, and we call it overscale. It seems to me, that's an option that's used in other institutions, and then we don't go through this...
Well, the...
...change, the thing where in fact, only, we pass something tonight which affects only one person.
Well, effects our advertising also, but, Annette, I'm sorry, Ms. Cordiero.
Thank you. Well, I understand the logic behind this, and I think it's a very common tactic. Every position advertises as a range, and I think all applicants pretty much assume that they're not coming in at the top range. But the top range is something that they know they can at some point achieve if they were to stay in the district long enough. In our case, when we advertise as a range, our range is so much smaller that even an applicant who's looking at that, recognizing they're not going to come in at the top, still sees that even if they were to stay with the district for a long period of time, they would not achieve the same level of salary as they might in another district, undoubtedly would in another district if they were to stay there. So I think the advertising impact in terms of how we post the position is significant. But I also think it's a very real incentive, because the fact of the matter is, while we can't necessarily afford to pay $160,000 to a new CBO that comes in now, we certainly would be, would want to have that person remain in the district, and if they were to do that, we would want to compensate them appropriately. So if they were to work up to that level, that seems reasonable. I think this actually does have significant advertising value and personnel value for once the person is in place.
I just have a few questions, I guess. One of mine is just a refresher. How many steps does the teacher's contract have?
We run up through year 10, then we have 11, 14, 17, 20, and we'll go to compaction at 23. We currently have 27. Year 27.
Year 27, so it's obviously not 27 steps, but, okay. I guess, I mean, I see that there could be a lot of value to adding a sort of a step nine to the administrative scale. I'm a little concerned about some administrators having a step nine and some not having a step nine. And I also don't know if we want to, specifically in this case, since we're going to be looking at cuts, maybe just target positions that are currently open if we're going to do a sort of this ad hoc step nine.
Well, normally, a district would pursue a rescaling of all the positions. So they'd take something like a salary increase next year, and they would apply that differentially across the scale so that they bring these positions into alignment. So one position might be a 2% increase, another might be a 3%, another might be a 4%. And by going through that over a series of years, you generally bring that into alignment with other districts. There are other ways to do it, though, but that's one common way of doing it, which is to fix the whole thing. But I believe that I heard in the discussion concern that we don't always bring people in at the first step. We give them credit in some other district for working three years as a high school administrator, and we bring them in at step four. So they would work their way up to step eight, and I thought I heard that you wanted something that was more attached to their time in the district, in our district, rather than just continuing to move up those steps.
No, I see the merit here. I understand the arguments for advertising, but I still have that same concern of bringing people in. And I don't know whether we want to have more discussion either now or at another time about that aspect.
Well, another way would be to step it down and say, "We will apply this at a longevity, longevity within the district at five years, at 10 years, at 15." And you know, these other districts, and you've heard of some of these other districts, at San Marcos, they do it, 14 years, 20 years, 25, 30 years of service as an administrator in the district. Now, you know darn well that most of the people are not ever hitting that, but they're advertising at levels that are much higher. Tustin, remember our discussions about Tustin? 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, 25 years, 30 years, 35 years, adding $250 a month.
Yeah, but that's part of a gold watch. Well, that is.
Well, Napa Unified, they hit it 17 and 20. And there are a number of other districts that run, you know, 14, 18, 21, 27, 30, 33 years in the district. I'm surprised at the length of these, but if you feel that it's more appropriate to scale that in at a lower point, at five years in the district, 10 years in the district, 15 years in the district, we could certainly do that. It would cost more right now.
If I may, I'd like to introduce a different thought. It seems to me, bordering on ludicrous for us to be talking about raises for anybody, for administrators in this case, when we haven't got the governor's budget, and that'll come out in January 10th. We know from the first interim report that we, the best case is, given the estimates we were given, that we're going to have to cut a million-five from the budget. It's possible that we'll have to, given the data we have now, it's possible we'll have to cut a great deal more than a million-five from the budget. And if the COLAs don't come through as anticipated, in the assumptions of the first interim report, what, 4.3% for next year and 2.5% for the following year, that we'll have to cut even more. And here we are, and it just, to me, just seems, as I say, a little short of ludicrous for us to be talking about salary increases for administrators until we know where we stand financially. We've done that before, and we end up without enough money.
Do you want to address that, or...
No, no, I was going to say, I'm willing to wait until, you know, for another week or two, you know, another meeting or two, until we have more information from the governor's office. But I guess, you know, I hear what Dr. Noel is saying. On the other hand, I see this as largely having a token value. You know, it impacts so few positions, and really, the value, as you know, you've all explained this evening, is in being able to advertise that higher, higher range. So it...
It scares me, to tell you the truth, that we would not get somebody that's going to tell us how much money we have, and that we need very badly to find a good person. And if this is very modest proposal, it's very modest, I think we all agree...
But this offers a 5% increase to one person who has been here eight years. It's not offering a 5% increase to a new CBO.
That's the real impact. It's, I guess, I'm hearing the argument that the impact in terms of drawing people in to actually apply for positions is also a real impact that we should be considering.
Yeah, I just want to be on record of saying I think that is just out in outer space, an eight-year incentive structure for 5%.
Well, I see it as an attempt to do, to have the biggest impact with the least amount of, with the least expenditure. Because we could have an impact if we were willing to spend a lot more money. We could have, we could affect a lot more than one person, and we could have a much larger impact, and we could attract a lot more candidates. It would have a much more real impact on people. But we would have to spend considerably more money to do that. This I see as an attempt to have an impact, because while it only affects one person this year, or near, next year, the idea is that it would affect the person we're going to hire, that we would entice that person to remain in the district, and that they would get that increase. And we could lower, as Dr. Sarvis was saying, we could lower the threshold. We could say they only have to be here three years, four years, five years, in order to get that. But I don't see it as not affecting anybody. Our intent is that it will affect them, because we want them to stay here.
We could also craft a motion that just has step nine for the CBO. And that would certainly be less expensive than offering an overscale payment, and yet the range would still be there to advertise.
That would sound like pretty much the same thing.
Well...
If you're seeing a lot of one job, and you say they're going to give it an extra step, whatever you call it, by any other name.
Well, it's different from saying, "Right now, we're going to, we're going to offer, you know, $20,000 more than we normally would for a CBO in order to get the best CBO possible," which I don't know that our budget could handle. So that's something else that we could talk about.
I would like to, and I think the public would like to, would be interested in knowing what the eligibility dates are for these positions, and maybe you'd like to provide that in the board brief?
I could certainly do that. Would you like me to price it at other levels, at other steps? Like a year five, year 10, something like that?
I feel like we've got several options in front of us.
Yes.
Although I'm willing to wait for the most current information from Sacramento, and then deal with one of the options that...
Well, we will get that information on January 10th in two days, and we'll have...
We'll have new projections. You're going to do, I think I recall you saying that 24 hours later, you're going to have new projections?
School Services told us today that they would develop new multi-year projections in consultation with our office for the 29th.
And when will we? And that'll be on the 29th?
Yeah, and you'll have an initial glimpse of the assumptions on the revenue side on the 22nd. I'll prepare a PowerPoint that goes with that.
I strongly suggest that this whole conversation be tabled until after the 29th, when we have some information.
If we were to do it tonight, could we change ads or anything else? I mean, the jobs that we have outstanding, or being advertised right now, are coming to a close, I mean, they're closing, is that correct?
Yes, they are.
Within like a week or two?
In fact, the way we've done this in the past, before I was superintendent, was to advertise, fail in the recruitment, then come back to the board and say, "We've got to do something, let's step this up." And we could continue along that vein, and that's fairly common. There are a lot of districts who operate in that way as well.
Dr. Sarvis, if our, application periods are coming to a close, right?
Yes, mid-January for Assistant Superintendent Budget for Nutrition Services.
So if, even if we were to approve this tonight, it would likely not have an impact on our applicants?
On these.
However, it could have an impact on how we would negotiate with an applicant if we were intending to hire them?
Yes, it would. And we are currently advertising for a Director of Special Education.
Okay.
And it would have an impact on our advertisement, we would change our advertisement.
Okay, and how, has that advertisement gone out already?
The initial one has.
Okay, and when will that close?
At the end of February.
I'm just wondering if waiting until January to make a decision on this, do you think that would hamper any recruitment that we're trying to do now?
I think it would have virtually no impact. In fact, for a position like the Assistant Superintendent, it's not much of an impact.
So...
It's still not bumping it up another $24,000 to 160, or...
15, 20% bump to get competitive, at least.
Well, maybe we should talk about that, but I didn't think that the board, given our current budget situation, would welcome any sort of a proposal like that. I listened very carefully to our last discussion.
So if we did table this, though, until late January?
Certainly.
That would, that wouldn't put us in any disadvantage... that would, that wouldn't put us in any disadvantage other, over where we would be if we, yeah, over where we would be if we.
I'll bring it back with the additional calculations at the end of January.
Okay.
Thank you.
We are on to B six, uh, B five. Board Action on Expulsion Cases, oh-six, oh-seven, well, let's do in the order, actually, on our sheets.
E-five.
E-five, yeah.
I'm sorry, E-five.
That's okay. Um, oh-seven, oh-eight dash, one, two. A motion to approve, oh, that was E-six, okay, we're jumping that one then.
No, go in the order, oh, we can't, sorry, we can't do that, that's E-six, so.
Yeah, thank you, okay, so E-five, I'm sorry, that was my mistake. In, oh-six, oh-seven dash, six-eight, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Do you wanna put the date on there just 'cause it was unclear?
Yeah, and I think that we aren't, I'm sorry, do you want to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel, or of our administrator? What we have listed on our sheet was not the hearing panel's recommendation.
With regard to the date, the end date of the expulsion?
Yes.
Okay, now, I'll, I'll move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel, with the exception that the end date be the end of the current semester. Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Nope, passes five, zero.
Uh, in the case, go ahead.
In oh-seven, oh-eight dash, three-three, I'm, I would like to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel with the exception that the end date be at the end of this semester.
Second.
Wait, I'm sorry, let me take that back. Yes, at the, the end of this semester.
So what you're saying is that the student would then remain in, in home instruction until the end of this semester?
Until the end of this semester, and then.
And then go to a junior high, not the sending junior high?
Correct.
Not the home junior high?
I'll second that.
Okay.
All those in favor, say, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, oh-seven, oh-eight dash, two-five, uh, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel with the exception that the term of the expulsion end in June two thousand and eight.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, passes five, zero. I'm sorry, I never said what, the other one passed, did I? It was, um.
Three, two.
Three, two.
Oh-seven, oh-eight dash, three-six, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No. So the vote is four, one, with Ms. Cordero saying no.
Uh, in the case of oh-seven, oh-eight dash, two-six, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes five, zero.
And then E-six, item E-six, uh, the case of oh-seven, oh-eight dash, one, two, move to approve the request for supplementary hearing, with the exception that item one on the list of, of requests from opposing counsel, that item one is to be stricken.
And do we wanna place a time limit on? On the length of the hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, for a thirty-minute hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, passes five, zero. And we are, the time for our break, we'll make it about ten minutes.
Did we get the supplemental hearing?
Yeah, that's what she just.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Break.
Almost back. Ms. Cordero, I have to ask for clarification, because there was a, a little problem with the last, with a, one of the motions.
Yes, I, I believe I misspoke, I believe I meant to say that we, I wanted to move that we suspend the expulsion through the remainder of, and that the student be allowed to remain in home hospital, and home, home instruction through the remainder of this semester, and return to a comprehensive junior high at the beginning of the spring semester.
Is that okay with you as a second? I believe you seconded it.
Yes, I did.
And? Does that change anything for anyone? No, we're all, okay, thank you for your.
And which, which number was that?
This was oh-seven, oh-eight dash, three-three. We had a problem because we were, the, the way it was described was not, um, was not possible. So we had to clarify which way we were going there.
Okay. If only we'd looked over at Mr. Gonzalez, he was probably going, what are they doing? Doing weird hand signals at the time.
Okay, so we're up to F-one, Board Discussion Direction on Future Review of the District's Mission Statement.
Well, our mission statement has been in place for many years. It's time to take a look at it, and I'd like the board's direction on how you'd like to go about this. If you're happy with it as it is, you may simply say so.
Dr. Sarvis, I think your microphone is not on.
If you're happy with the mission statement as it is, you may simply say so. We can bring it back for action. If you'd like to involve the entire community in a strategic planning process on it, we could do that, too. I mean, there are any number of possibilities here. Or we, I could simply collect concerns and, and statements from board members to bring back a revision, possible revision of the mission statement. How would you like to proceed?
Well, I'll start by saying I have mixed feelings about this, so, um, I'm not sure which way to go, so I'll let other people go ahead.
I know I sent you an email about it, so I'll start. I may be the only person, and I know that people have heard it from me before, but I'm always troubled when we approve our board focus goals, that they're not, that there's not linkage, there's not a reexamination of the mission statement before we go on to our board focus goals, et cetera, et cetera. So I would very much like to see that, that kind of linkage. I'm not sure it requires a full-on community strategic plan, very time-consuming, and particularly of staff time. And also, given our budget situation, I'm not sure it's something that we should be embarking on right now. I, I would think that something more streamlined might be the better way to go. But with the mission statement itself, I have issues because it focuses on teaching, but really not on student learning. So that's just a very, very basic flaw that I see in the mission statement. But I would like to see more linkage with a vision, a mission statement, and then our board focus goals.
It's a great goal, getting there is the hard part.
And we actually have a strategic plan, and I would like to see this all in context. If we're going to look at the mission statement, we should be, even if we're not gonna do a full-on review, just for the board to look at it all together, the, the vision statement, the mission statement, the, the, um, the board focus goals, and the strategic plan, let's just take a look at the whole thing together. And then we may wanna just look at the mission statement and see if that needs revamping, but just, as Mrs. Harder said, tie everything together.
Is it something that we can send a couple of board members off to kind of work, to work on a little bit and come back?
Can we review the, the strategic plan as, as part of a board brief before we make that decision about how we wanna proceed?
Yeah, I'd like to see as, I, I agree with Ms. Parker and, and Ms. Harder, I think, that, um, I'd like to see it in the context of the strategic plan. I'd like to think about it in that context, as I'm thinking about how, because there are some things that I thought, you know, this word states, we'll provide professional instruction, I think that's your concern about a focus on instruction. I thought we oughtn't be in, talking about the environment, the climate, the, all kinds of things beyond just instruction. Not that instruction is a just. But there's more that we should be, that should be in our mission statement beyond instruction as well. And also, just even some of the wording of, that students will take responsibility for their own learning and development. I felt like that needs to be crafted in a way, in a way that suggests more that students are going to be sort of empowered, you know, not that we're gonna shift the responsibility to them. So, but I would like to think about crafting that language in the context of what, what we're doing with our strategic plan. So I agree, I think it would be helpful to see the plan again, and then come back to this.
Then we can move on?
My, my eyes glaze over. I, I, I'm just searching back through my years that I've been paying attention to, to the school district. And I can't think of one failing of, of the district that I can attribute to a bad mission statement. I just don't think, the connection to me is not terribly operational. And I just, I was also thinking, I, I taught at UCSB for thirty-five years, and I, I have to admit, I don't know what the mission statement was. And, and I, and I, and I don't know anybody who does, but I know some people who were really effective.
I'm, as I said, I'm torn. I, it's something that can direct us in a right direction if, if done well. On the other hand, it can be just a very time-consuming thing, so.
Well, not that this is any motivation for anyone, but I really hate having someone come up for public comment to say, didn't you read your mission statement? And I wanna say, I don't have, I don't feel any real ownership over this, this mission statement, I don't necessarily agree with it. Well, clearly it's communicating something, so.
And no matter what it says, they're gonna do that.
At least I could feel responsible now.
Okay, um, can we move on then? That's enough.
Good, you'll see this item again. Thank you.
F-two, Proposals from Community Opinion Survey Consultant Regarding Viability of a Proposed Parcel Tax.
And Eric Smith, our interim Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, will give this report.
Yes, thank you. On November thirteenth, the board directed staff to solicit proposals from Community Opinion Survey Consultants regarding the viability of a proposed parcel tax. We contacted three different firms, one being the Center for Community Opinion, one being Godbe Research, and one being William S. Berry. As you can see from the summary below you, we got responses from the Center for Community Opinion and Godbe Research, but William S. Berry did not respond, even after trying to contact them repeatedly and hearing a number of excuses of why they didn't submit a proposal, their voicemail was down, we'll get back to you. So after a while, I just gave up on them. Per the board's instructions, we asked them for a range in terms of interviews, with a minimum of six hundred and a maximum of eight hundred. You see the range of cost there, between thirty-two, two-fifty to forty-one, seven-fifty for Center for Community Opinion, and twenty-nine, six-seventy to thirty-five, seven-ninety for Godbe Research. Unlike most professional services, whether it's insurance, or attorneys, or auditors, this is a little bit different because we're talking about something where a variety of stakeholders probably need to be involved, because this is something that you, if you go forward with, you're going to need the community's input and buy-in. So our recommendation is to basically form a subcommittee, superintendent subcommittee, including two board members, to basically interview, to see which one of these firms is the best fit for the district, and contemplate that in conjunction with the cost, because I think that's gonna be a paramount in terms of making your decision. So that's our recommendation, and I'll defer to Dr. Sarvis.
Well, we've had discussions about whether we ought to even pursue a parcel tax, and, and if we pursue one, we should do it right. If we pursue one, we should find out what the, what the sentiment in the community is, what the appropriate amounts would be. And I think you said it fairly well recently, when you said, if you go through a firm and they establish the amounts, then you'd better just go ahead with those amounts. And causes.
They're good at, yeah, they're often good at what they do, and they promise success, which is pretty amazing.
I thought originally we were gonna do this for the elementary school district only. This is for both, isn't it?
This is for both. I, I don't recall asking for the elementary separately, it was my understanding it was for both. And I think their proposals are kinda tailored to, you know, contemplate your almost unique configuration. I say almost unique.
Correct. Yeah, okay, so it, the idea is that we might do one and then do the other anyways.
Well, you might test better in one district than the other, depending on what your initiatives are, depending on what the proposed tax rate, and you might decide to go one time, one year, and go back to the other district later, or you might decide it's best to do it all in one. There's so many variables at play, and I, I think that's why it'd be worthwhile for an interview process to be conducted to really pick these people's brains.
I actually would really like to move forward, you know, with an investigation into the process, and I'd volunteer to be on a subcommittee.
Great. The flat-rate parcel tax is sort of a, it's a, it's a type of tax that I'm not particularly comfortable with, but Proposition thirteen specifically crafted language, so that this is the only way that a school district can go to its community and get local support for programming that the state does not provide funds for. And I look at our situation with arts in particular, and music, and there is no state money coming for that, and we're in a situation for cuts, so even though I'm uncomfortable with it, I think that our community deserves the opportunity to support this. So I would also be happy for us to explore it further, at least.
Would you be willing to serve on the subcommittee?
I would if somebody else doesn't want to do it, but I'm very happy for somebody else, maybe Dr. Noel would like to volunteer.
Do what?
To serve on the subcommittee to interview these, these possible consultants.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
And I, I think we should, I assure your center was completely, Mr. Parker, you know, it's a, it's a regressive tax, which I'm not, I've never been comfortable with, but, uh, the magic words you used were for the arts, the humanities, music, for the things that are not guaranteed funding from the state. And I, and I would, you know, my support is contingent upon, on specification of uses. I, the timing worries me. I don't, I don't know that, given what we're headed into budget-wise, you know, you can argue, well, the, the greater the need, the more support. You could also argue, uh, this is too, too kind of chaotic and noisy of an environment to gen-, to, to get the support. And I don't know where, I don't know which argument I'm most persuaded by right now. I'm, I'm uncomfortable going out asking for money until we get our house in order a lot more than we have. And I think that's, that very badly weakened us to go and ask for anything, whether it be a bond issue or a parcel tax. But I'll certainly serve on the, on the committee.
You know, it's interesting that you raised that, that issue, Dr. Noel, 'cause I've been talking to some people in other districts about parcel taxes that they've recently been involved in, because I was curious for exactly the reason that you, you've just framed. And I spoke to a couple of people in Livermore Joint Unified District, and, I mean, it's not a secret, my daughter's an assistant principal there, so I talked to several of her colleagues who were involved with the parcel tax, because she had no connection with it. And several years ago, their district was experiencing great financial difficulty, morale was low, they did not have a very high profile in the community, from what I understand, talking to these people, that that was, that's an understatement. And they crafted it, they did, uh, they worked with one of these outfits. They gauged community sentiment, if you will. The research firm did it extremely accurately. They framed a ballot measure that involved arts and science for elementary, electives for junior high school. electives for junior high school, and high school counselors for the high school. They had a very low high school, student-high-school counselor ratio. And obviously, it's a two-thirds vote, and they also formed a citizens committee to oversee it. It was very, very, very tightly crafted, and it won overwhelmingly. So it was a very similar atmosphere to what we're experiencing now.
Some courage.
Anecdotal evidence, but nonetheless, yeah.
Well, I was just going to move that we direct the superintendent to form a subcommittee, including two board members, to interview the above consultants and make a final recommendation regarding the selection. And I would add to that, that at that time, the Board would also make a final recommendation of whether we want to go ahead with a selection. So, that's my motion.
Well, I just, I wanted to add one other comment, because I'm inclined to freeze all discretionary spending. But this one is to get more money. So I'm a little more comfortable.
Well, in this, I want to make it clear, my motion is not saying we're going to spend this money. My motion is just to form the subcommittee.
I know, but I'm anticipating where things go.
All those in favor?
Aye. Sorry, request to address the Board of Education by John Dewey regarding Glen Annie District housing opportunity.
We were approached by John Dewey a number of months ago with a very interesting proposal. We asked him to put it together so that the Board could take a look at it. And we have with us tonight John Dewey to present that proposal. Whoops.
That's no way to treat a guest.
It's still working. The IBM ThinkPad, it takes its licks and keeps on ticking. But let me see if technology will support us here with the live screen up. There's the infamous blue screen. So we may have to rely upon your hard copies if this doesn't come back. But again, Madam President, fellow members of the Board, Dr. Sarvis, thanks for having me. My name is John Dewey, and I am one of the partners in the Glen Annie Golf Course out in Golita. Many of you are familiar with Glen Annie, we're located directly across Cathedral Oaks from Dos Pueblos High School. Some of you may have followed our history in the press. We've had some articles written about us recently. I think we might have something, give us a minute. But I'll keep talking, that's what I do for a living. The golf course was opened about ten years ago. It took us roughly eight to nine years to go through the county approval process to get the final entitlements for the course. And over the past ten years, we have not met any of our expectations in terms of financial performance. We had three different feasibility consulting firms that told us roughly the same thing, that we might have eighty to ninety thousand golfers per year want to play our course and be willing to pay us about eighty to ninety dollars per green fees. The reality is, we've averaged probably forty thousand golfers per year willing to pay us forty dollars per round. So that combined with the fact, our original budget to build the course was twelve million dollars. We wound up spending twenty million dollars. So we had nearly double our original cost. No, it's on the hard drive, we'll see. We've had nearly double our original cost, and we've had roughly a quarter of our projected revenue. So as a result of that, we've lost money to the tune of about a million to a million and a half dollars per year. The owners of the course are very philanthropic, but they've decided there are probably better uses of their funds than supporting the local golfers and the community in perpetuity. So they have asked my firm, and we've done some other projects with them in the past, to figure out if there are any other alternative uses for the property that might have an opportunity to recover some of the investment, but at the same time, provide greater benefit out to the community. The property, as you know, if you want to flip that over, is located across Cathedral Oaks from DP High School. We are entirely located within the county. The city limit of Golita runs along Cathedral Oaks. And then there's about a fifteen-acre piece of property that protrudes north of Cathedral Oaks that was also included the city when they incorporated about four years ago. Our property is about a hundred and sixty acres total land area. About a hundred acres are actually used for the golf course. And the remaining balance of about sixty acres is devoted to the slopes in the back, and then also some environmentally sensitive habitat areas, including Glen Annie Creek, that of course flows right behind the high school. Over the past two and a half years, we've spent, I think we're now up to about a hundred and forty individual or group meetings that we've held with members of the community and other organizations. And we posed the same question to all of them. And the question is quite simple, if this property were no longer a golf course, what would you suggest as other possible uses for the property that would have some benefit to the community? And we have heard all kinds of answers, but I think the answers fall within the range of the bell-shaped curve. Everybody said, "Can you do something to try and retain the golf course? Is there any way you could potentially build around it? Is there any way you can squeeze more benefits out of it?" A lot of people said that. A lot of people said, "There's a tremendous shortage of soccer fields in the community." UCSB continues to consume a lot of its green and open space. It is on a very significant long-term expansion program. Gersh Park over by the marketplace there has a very limited amount of playing space. And yet, there is still roughly three thousand families that participate in the AYSO leagues around the area. So soccer fields appear to be in short supply. They also said the obvious, we need some type of additional housing, particularly emphasized on the affordable and the workforce. But we understand that some market rate housing would go with that. The property is a beautiful property, it's in the base of the foothills. And right now, it serves on average about three to four hundred locals that are regular golfers in addition to the tourists. So it's a very small microcosm of the recreational participants in the community. But could you open it up to public access, trails, and the open space? So that would be one way to serve the community. They also said, "We have a fine restaurant and meeting space up there. We serve a lot of community events." I think last year, we had over a hundred and eighty different community functions, some of the nonprofits, the Rotary, the Chamber. Even the County of Santa Barbara's planning department had their Christmas party there, which is very interesting. In terms of some of the other things that could be done in conjunction with this project, the actual widening of Glen Annie Road from the Cathedral Oaks, Glen Annie intersection all the way down to the 101, it's currently at two lanes. And then also the widening of Cathedral Oaks in between Dos Pueblos High School and our property, which, as many of you might be aware, if you're out there in the morning at drop-off time or in the afternoon, it's the least desirable intersection you want to sit through as a parent or as a resident in the community. We have close to twenty acres of environmentally sensitive habitat areas, riparian corridors, wildlife pathways through the property. Part of the reason it took eight to nine years to have the property approved initially were some of the concerns of the local environmental groups that we wanted to be sure were addressed adequately. In conjunction with our proposed redevelopment of the property, we believe we can even expand some of those riparian corridors and repair them to their natural state before the golf course was put in place. Naturally, any development these days must follow the best available sustainable design principles. Sustainability is a word that is being bandied about often, and everything must be green. Well, it goes without saying that any project, especially in the South Coast, Santa Barbara County area, will be significantly green. The City of Golita's general plan has identified the view from Cathedral Oaks and Alameda looking into our property as a significant visual resource to the community. It's nice of them to consider the county property right next door as part of their view shed, but they have that right too. And we respect that. When you drive along Cathedral Oaks, it is a beautiful vista looking into the property. What's interesting, though, is you can really only see into the property for about two hundred yards along Cathedral Oaks, roughly between the high school parking lot and Plaza Street. If you go closer to Glen Annie, we have some berms that try and keep the golf balls into the golf course. If you go a little bit further to the west, the property rises up in the foothills and drops behind a ridge, so you can't even see the property from there. And also, given the trees that surround the property, if you're sitting at the Glen Annie overpass, over the 101, you cannot see any part of the property. But yet, if you're up on the property, you're able to see all the way to the ocean over this. It's a very unique topography condition because of the very slow up slope. The improvement in the circulation for this area has benefits not only to all of the Dos Pueblos High School parents, students, faculty, and staff, but most of the residents that live north of the 101 as well. The City of Golita's general plan had always planned for the widening of Cathedral Oaks along the entire boundary of the City of Golita. But widening of Cathedral Oaks, you know, there's a double-edged sword when you talk about transportation improvements around here. I'm not, I don't live here, I only visit the area on business about every week. So I have a great appreciation for the desire to improve transportation infrastructure around here. Our project has the ability to do that. In order for our project to proceed, and we've had significant discussions with the County of Santa Barbara, County of Santa Barbara said, "We would love to consider redevelopment proposals." Unfortunately, because you are outside of the urban boundary limit line, any redevelopment of your property would require a general plan amendment. You cannot do a general plan amendment in this area unless it is done in conjunction with the updated Golita Valley Community Plan. The Golita Valley Community Plan is in the process of being updated. I think about a year and a half ago, they formed a visioning committee that came out with some recommendations. And now, I believe Supervisor Wolf is forming another committee to study the recommendations. And the county staff people basically said to us, "When we form a committee to look at something related to county planning, hopefully your kids who are in fourth and sixth grade will be in college by the time we finish our committee process." County planning is a very thoughtful, careful, prudent analysis of these matters. But they basically said to us, "If you'd like to do anything differently with your property, you need to talk to the City of Golita," which we have been doing for the past two and a half years. Both the prior council, as well as the current city council, have said to us, "We would welcome the opportunity to annex your property into the City of Golita." And they'd welcome that opportunity for a couple reasons. One, our property impacts the City of Golita because we can't get to the 101 freeway but down Glen Annie Road through the city. So we put impacts on the City of Golita, but currently, they don't have any revenue benefit from our sales tax. They have no planning control or jurisdiction over us. But we believe the city is not only the best jurisdiction to control the planning destiny of our property, but they're also the best service provider, just pure and simple because of our location. The City of Golita's police department can better service than the county sheriff's department. Another benefit to the community is there's also an opportunity to have some passive park space that would, again, expand the recreational amenity beyond purely golf. We've been back and forth with the county, as well as the City of Golita, for the past two and a half years. And we have come up with this current plan that we're actually presenting to the city staff tomorrow that includes a combination of retaining a golf course. However, what we're proposing is to go from a regulation-sized golf course down to an executive course. So that's taking a golf course that's roughly six thousand yards long and shrinking it down to about three thousand yards. Including some new soccer fields, including an artificial surface field, because we understand if it's not artificial surface, there are a lot of challenges to keep it maintained and playable throughout the year. And then, including some housing units. The housing units that we have in this plan have a total of about two hundred and fifty units. I believe it's roughly eighty market rate homes up in this area, which would be on approximately six to eight thousand square foot lots. And then down in this area and this area, we would go with a little bit higher density product, which we envision still would be a single-family detached product, but it could be as dense as fifteen to eighteen units to the acre. So the total of roughly eighty units here, and if my math is right, about another hundred and seventy units here, makes about two hundred and fifty total units. The amount of space allocated to housing is roughly sixteen percent of the total project area. So the project as a whole still remains as a recreationally focused community, still preserves a significant amount of the original open space, as well as the environmentally sensitive habitat. Why am I here tonight, talking to the school district board of education? We will have a requirement to have roughly twenty-five percent of our housing units allocated to affordable and workforce housing. Under this configuration, that's about sixty-three units. We believe, because of our unique location across the street from Dos Pueblos High School, that it makes sense to consider dedicating a certain percentage of those units to district faculty and staff that could be working at Dos Pueblos High School or another nearby, I think it's junior high is the other closest facility. We believe, because these units are an additional community benefit, that when you talk about affordable and workforce housing, you think first about, how can you provide the greatest benefit to the community? Some people talk about first responders. Can you provide these types of housing units to the police, the fire, you know, nurses? Well, we think that the district employees, the faculty and staff are equally as important and in some ways could be argued to be more valuable long-term to the community, the first responders. So we would like to come up with a unique proposal that would have a dedicated donation of land that would result in the creation of approximately thirteen to sixteen units that would be allocated to district employee housing. We've had a prior meeting with David Hetjank and Dr. Sarvis, as well as the district council, Craig Price. We're very familiar with the district's feasibility assessment analysis you've been doing on your surplus sites, Tatum and Hidden Valley over the last couple of years. We actually were one of the responders to the RFP process a few years ago. So we know there's a need for it. We know you have come across some opportunities for solutions in your existing feasibility process. In some ways, this is similar to what you've been analyzing, but in some unique ways, it's different. This is not an asset currently owned by the district. This is not an asset that could be sold for cash and cash used for other requirements in the district. This would be a straight donation of land to the district. We believe structurally, it makes sense to donate the land either to the district or to a separate nonprofit affiliated foundation of the district. And then, once you own it, then you have the ability to direct the ultimate purchasing of the units to those individuals that make the most sense within the district to be the purchasers of them. If we were to be the owner and developer and... If we were to be the owner and developer and marketer of those units without involving the district in the ownership of the land, we, we don't believe we would be able to specifically allocate those units to district employees. Even though we're not looking for any outside subsidy in terms of state or local housing finance funds, the fair housing requirements that fall upon these affordable and workforce housing, you know, there's probably a demand for 20,000 of these units in the community. And yet realistically, there may only be 50, 100 or 200 of them built over the next couple of years. So obviously, there's a huge supply and demand imbalance. But by structuring a donation to the district or a nonprofit affiliated entity with the approval of the City of Goleta, they will have to support the unique allocation of these units to the purchasers. We believe that it can be achieved. We've had discussions with the City of Goleta staff and individual council members on this type of proposal, and they said, "Makes sense to us. Is the district interested? Are they willing to participate in such a structure? And can they? Are there any structural hurdles or obstacles they could face? Education code and all the other challenges that you faced in analyzing your surplus facilities?" We are at square one in this process with the City of Goleta. We're meeting with staff shortly. We'll be meeting with the city council members individually. Our request to them is, "Are you willing to support us if we submit an application for a general plan amendment within the city's general plan and annexation to the City of Goleta? From the time we submit an application, which could be within the second quarter of this year, if the city council gives us a thumbs up, it is likely to be another two to three year process for us to go through environmental review, all the feasibility analysis, the mitigation discussions with the city before you get to a final approval." So my request from the board tonight would be to move this discussion with the board to the next step. And I think that would potentially ask the board to direct, you know, David Hetjank, Dr. Sarvis and Craig Price to spend a little bit more time with us to brainstorm, does this structure pass muster in terms of not failing for conflict with education code or any other constraints that the district faces from a financing or operational perspective? And then assuming that it passes that brainstorming level with staff, to bring it back to the board and ask for a formal endorsement to move forward towards discussions with the City of Goleta and ultimately entering into some type of joint development agreement with not only the developer, but probably also involving the City of Goleta. So it is not a simple process. I'll be completely frank with you that we may get shot down by the city council when we ask them for a thumbs up within the next three to six months. But we as developers and owners of this property, we don't have a lot of choices. We have a property that's losing money. We have gotten an extension from our lender for another couple of years. We need to do something different in terms of redevelopment, or we need to consider our fallback alternative, which is closing the golf course and selling off three 40-acre estate parcels. That's what the current zoning permits within the county. And we think if we get to that point, we lose and the community will lose on a very unique opportunity. Because I don't think this area of the Goleta Valley needs another three 40-acre estate homes when you have a tremendous recreational opportunity there. But we have a financial feasibility challenge, you know? We are not a not-for-profit, and if we were a not-for-profit, we would hope to break even. Circumstances created an upside-down property, but we also have an ownership group that is willing to do what it takes to find out, what is the appropriate package of community benefits that might garner enough political support and community support to do something different on this property? And we think by including a portion of our affordable workforce units as dedicated district employee housing, that would be one additional community benefit we can say when we're talking to the community. Right now, we've got retaining the golf course, adding in some soccer fields, building some affordable workforce housing. And if we can say a portion of these units are dedicated to teacher housing, it makes us look good. Not only makes us look good, but it's in the best interests of the community. So everything in this development business is all about providing the right amount of community benefits in order to come up with a proposal that's a win-win. The developer, landowner, the community, as well as all the other stakeholders that can participate in the community benefits. With that, I can throw it open for any questions you might have. Oh, 3D rendering. Faculty housing would be very close to the soccer fields, which would be about a, you know, 100 yard walk and going across Cathedral Oaks to get to DP High School. Again, very unique site that has some unique benefits to DP High School.
And the intersection down on this corner is?
This is Alameda.
Okay.
Right here. And Placer over here. Not only do we see widening Cathedral Oaks, the four lanes, as many of you are aware, we now have a left turned hand, left-hand turn lane to go up Glen Annie Road, but there is no right-hand turn lane to go down Glen Annie to the freeway. That's something that should be fixed in this process.
Well, board?
This is mighty unusual for us, so. You'll mind if we pause for a second here?
I just, I want to know what the downside for the district would be.
Well, we'd, we'd have to set up probably a foundation or a separate entity. We'd have to operationalize that. You know, in my talking, well, in Dave and my talking with Craig Price, there aren't really many downsides. I mean, this is quite an opportunity to the district. So I asked John just to bring a contract in tonight, and I'm surprised he didn't do it. No, just kidding, just kidding.
From my perspective, there's, there's certainly no risk in Dr. Sarvis and Mr. Hetjank and Mr. Price continuing their conversation with Mr. Dewey and seeing whether there are truly some, you know, legal or other, you know, perhaps ethical obstacles to doing this. You know, sort of nothing ventured, nothing gained. We'll have more information. We don't need to make any sort of decision tonight, but I, I think it's worth doing some more information gathering.
Yeah, I, I agree.
What are, are you going to other groups with the other 50 units or is that?
You know, we have a lot of requests from employers in the area. It would be very easy to allocate them to specific groups. Your group is the only one that we have an interest in specific allocation because of the unique location across from the high school. I think with the balance of these units, we're going to leave it up to the city. Typically, if there was a public financing subsidy component, it would go through the local housing finance agency and they'd have 5,000 applications and it would go through a lottery process. So it's very difficult even to allocate these to first responders.
We have some 170, 180 employees just at that school. This would allow us a foray into that process of setting up a separate entity so that the school board doesn't become a landlord and it gets operated by that entity.
Well, whatever happens with this process, thank you for thinking of us. I mean, it does make a lot of sense and this is unique certainly, I think, in this board's experience to have a developer really think about the needs of the school district too and what makes sense or what's going on right next to a particular property. So thank you.
You're welcome. Look forward to working with staff and hopefully coming back to you at some point within the next few months with a little more meat around the proposal. We know the devil is in the details in these things. And our goal is to try and make sure that there is no liability to the district. But by making you a landowner or a nonprofit-related entity, that structurally, we've been advised by our own council, allows us to specifically allocate units to your purpose. But again, all subject to the city's support of such a unique discrimination. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
We are on to F4, the first reading of revisions to administrative regulations 1312.4, Uniform Compliant Procedures and Exhibit E11312.4 and E21312.4.
And Michael Gonzalez will make this presentation.
Thank you. Last month, we were notified by the California School Boards Association that Assembly Bill 347 modified the language of the education code referring to the uniform complaint procedures. And it mandated that the uniform complaint procedures be modified to permit parents, students, faculty to issue complaints regarding California high school exit exam issues. So we took a look at the existing administrative regulation, 1312.4. And what we have before you are actually two things. Language that includes the new requirements and also cleanup language of the existing administrative regulation. The information that has been deleted or suggested to be deleted has been struck out. The new language that's being added to the uniform complaint has been underlined. And again, the basic focus of this is to permit parents, students and faculty to make a complaint regarding inadequacies or deficiencies in supplemental services for students who have not passed the California exit exam. And this will be the first reading.
Ms. Cordero?
I had a question and it, I really was, I didn't have any, a question about what was being added. I actually had a question about a section that was already there, and that's on page two of four, under facilities. It talks about a condition that poses an emergency or urgent threat to health and safety of students and staff. And I was wondering, because later on in the, in the document, in the AR, it talks about that the, there should be a remedy within 30 working, 30 working days or not to exceed 30 working days, that the, there will be a response in 45 working days. And it seems to me that in a situation where it's deemed an emergency situation, that that would, that there ought to be another timeline associated with that. And I couldn't find any other reference to taking care of emergencies more quickly.
But two, two points. First of all, you are correct in, in understanding that our facilities department would respond immediately to any emergency situation. That historically has been the case. However, I will share with you that, that the assembly bill and the education code does permit the, the timeframes that are written in there. And so we chose not to modify existing language. But you have staff assurance and based on the experiences of the district, that facilities moves immediately to remedy emergency situations. But the language does reflect what the ed code and the assembly bill requires.
Ms. Carter?
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to make one suggested addition on exhibit, well, it would be exhibit one. Exhibit one being the explanation to parents and exhibit two, I assume, being the actual form that you fill out?
Yes, to, to be more correct, exhibit one is actually the poster that would be posted at the school sites and exhibit two is the complaint form.
Then I'd actually like to suggest an addition to the poster. And under number two, to include the language from the, I don't know whether it's from the board policy or the administrative regs, but the language about bathrooms so that it says includes restrooms which are not clean, maintained or kept open in accordance with education code.
Not a problem?
Yeah, I just, because it's, it's actually specified in the policy and the administrative regs, I think it would be extremely helpful to also specify it on the poster.
Anything else? We will see it again, I'm sure.
Thank you very much.
Now we can go back to the consent agenda. We have item D3.
This has been through Robyn Swawski's office, yes.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero, passes. Next, D6.
I have, I have alternative language and would like a, kind of to have a really a discussion of some issues involved here. And I wonder if I can be brought back on the regular agenda.
We can do that?
There isn't any time that needs, this needs to be done?
Well, yes, it was to be turned in by December 28. This was the language that we were given. If you'd like it returned, I would prefer to return it to our very next meeting, our special meeting.
I just want more time than right now.
Okay, is there something you'd like to give us in advance to consider or?
Available language?
Okay, okay.
So, you know, if I'll be able to explain it and?
Sure.
Answer any questions while.
Where does this language come from? County?
Was sent to us from the county office, yes.
And this is something that has been signed off on by governing boards for years and years and years?
Yes, I believe so.
Well, we ran into a lot of difficulties at the end of the last fiscal year about transfers and the board, and there were transfers made that were not explained to the board. And there were, there were consequences about negative fund balances. And I think we need to look at this sort of carefully and then make some modifications.
I'm sorry.
Can we move on to item D15?
Yes, okay, so we're going to leave this, D15, sorry.
I just, I just fully understand what, enough about this change order.
If you're referring to the larger of the two items, construct new manhole cone. The Eddie Matthews Field, this is a ramp that was required by our ADA lawsuit settlement that goes from the back of the gymnasium down to Eddie Matthews Field for ADA access. And as you're aware, there's a hillside there. And on that hillside there, we found some drainage and other infrastructure that we did not know existed. And so while creating that ramp and discovery item of finding this drainage system there, we needed to create and replace some of that system, including a new manhole cover going down, and that was not part of the original plans and specifications.
Okay, thank you very much.
Move to approve?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. We're on to coming events.
We have a, oh, I'll wait on board meetings.
Any other coming, any other coming, nope. Any board correspondence? Any board comments?
I have just a quick comment, and that is that I attended the grand opening of the virtual enterprise program at Santa Barbara High School in mid-December, and I just, I'm sorry that all of us couldn't be there, because it was a fantastic presentation by students who were so poised and so eloquent in their delivery of a business plan. They had a full PowerPoint presentation that they made. The mayor was there to do the ribbon cutting. It was just magnificent, and it was understandable why they were the first organization in the country, the first high school in the country to be granted a license to file income tax returns online. They're no longer the only high school. They were gracious enough to point out that others have been licensed since then. But the other thing that they did, which I thought was a, could be a model for our district, is they served an entire luncheon to the people who had come, but every single thing in the luncheon was recyclable. There was not any waste generated from the luncheon, including food remnants. They had every single product that they used. There was, in fact, there were no trash cans, because they were all recyclable containers for the different kinds of recycling. I thought that everybody in the district should take a lesson from that. And so I just wanted to acknowledge what a fantastic project out of only the virtual enterprise itself, but also, they were generating additional funds by recycling. So everything that they do is in this entrepreneurial spirit, and they are doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
It's a great program and has a great teacher.
Any other board comments, future agenda items?
Well, we do have a special board meeting next week, next Tuesday. We'll start our gang discussion at 6 o'clock, a gang prevention discussion at 6 o'clock. We may have a preceding item about procedures for negotiating for unrepresented management and confidential employees. I'll work with Craig Price on that. And then we'll add this item on the adoption of the resolution for delegating the governing board powers and duties to the end of that meeting.
Meeting adjourned.
Yes, before...